All right. Good evening. I would like to call this intro meeting of the Board of Education to order. It is 5:30. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Eastab. Ms. Eastab?
Here.
David Wortman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Nelson Boyer?
Here.
Judy Justice? Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Rabinbark?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowie. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda. Mr. Boyer.
Mr. Boyer, is there a second?
I second it, Jeanette Nichols.
There's a second from Ms. Nichols. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Eastab?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is approved, seven nothing. Item number three, closed session. We have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 11A1, A3, and A6, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to consider personnel matters, and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records, North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and 321, and to consider student records rendered confidential under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for closed session. Mr. Boyer.
Is there a second?
I second the motion, Ms. Nichols.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Eastab?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will return no later than 6:30. Thank you. We are back in open session, and we are on item number four, new business. Item A, 2020-2021 school year opening update. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, this evening you will receive an update regarding the opening of the 2020-2021 school year. I have made a recommendation that the board consider opening under Plan C. I'll start with a brief recap of where we find ourselves. In June, we received the Department of Health and Human Services toolkit, followed by guidance from the Department of Public Instruction. The Department of Health and Human Services document outlined the health and safety requirements for schools. The Department of Public Instruction document provided suggestions or recommendations. One of the Department of Health and Human Services requirements was that each district in North Carolina develop three plans. Plan A, with all students face-to-face, with minimal social distancing and some health requirements. Plan B, which is a hybrid with face-to-face and remote instruction, with limited numbers of students in buildings, and the same requirements for A plus enhanced health requirements. And Plan C, no students in buildings, all students receive instruction remotely. Work began to develop Plan B because Plan B, as I shared, includes the requirements of Plan A, and a good part of Plan C was addressed as school closed last year. Work groups were formed and engaged in the work quickly, teaching and learning, operations, health, communications, and finance. Requirements changed. Guidance became a moving target at times, making it difficult to determine where and how to begin planning. We expected a decision July 1 regarding the plan under which school districts in North Carolina would open. July 1 came and went with no decision from the governor as to which plan we would follow. New Hanover County Schools continued to follow the directive to develop the three plans, and on July 10, the board approved a Plan B scenario for the district. Still, at that time, no word as to which plan would be required by the governor for the state. On July 14, Governor Cooper announced Plan B with the option for districts to go to Plan C. Work continued in earnest on Plan B. As the work groups and work group leaders have met over the past weeks, progress in planning has occurred. Planning for decisions that can only be made centrally expanded to those that can only be made at the building level. Principals and school teams have also been working in earnest. There have been and continue to be more questions than answers due to evolving directives and guidance, and the lack of a knowledge base or working models for schools that could be viewed, as this is unprecedented. It's become apparent that moving from planning to implementation is where the difficulty increases by an order of magnitude. As we've worked, we've been in constant contact with and held many conversations with New Hanover County Public Health officials, and I do very much appreciate their willingness and their support as we have put together plans. I have no doubt that Plan B can be implemented at some point. It may not be pretty. It may be confused. It might even be a bit chaotic. However, I do qualify that statement that Plan B can be implemented, given enough time, resources, and available people. We are extremely short on time. Year-round and restart schools and early college high school openings are upon us. August 17 is not too much further in our future. I've talked with many principals and employees, and they have been direct and forthright and shared their thoughts and their concerns about opening under Plan B, given the current circumstances and the time that we have. However, operating schools at some point in the future under Plan B in New Hanover County Schools is a near certainty, as it is highly unlikely that Plan B will be in, excuse me, Plan A will be in effect at any time soon, meaning that Plan B would have to be a transition. Again, I have no doubt that this district can open under Plan B, just not for a while. More time is needed to develop and refine procedures and processes. Procedures and processes for grouping students, for transporting, screening, processes and procedures for students and staff who show symptoms at the bus stop and in buildings. We need procedures in order to support the training, and we'll have to implement the training. We need time to talk with staff and to support them, and we need to work to be sure that we have safe practices in place and determine how to best monitor and maintain those safe health practices, as well as ensuring that at all times necessary PPE is available in all school spaces, and that cleaning supplies and protocols are in place, monitored and followed. This is no small undertaking. You may be wondering, why is this recommendation made now? There are several reasons. Planning and the development of implementation procedures for Plan B had to occur. Until work was underway, we didn't know what we didn't know. Until that work began and as it progressed, it would not be possible to know how implementation might occur and what barriers might be present. Much work has been done and must continue to be done because at some point, the district will likely transition to Plan B. The capacity of the district to open with students, even a limited number of students, is not sufficiently built. Thinking through all the logistics that must be considered in every school, managing the many requirements that are present is not something the district and schools will be prepared for, for some time. Meeting the requirements for health and safety is a moving target. Things have changed, and interpretations have changed. There are many questions yet to be answered, big questions, such as, what happens when a child tests positive? What happens when a teacher tests positive? What happens when a young child is screened at a bus stop and has a fever? How are symptomatic children and staff cared for, and how are others protected, given the nature of classrooms and schools and the close proximity in which work is done for extended periods of time? Finally, opening under Plan B will take time, people, and resources. This evening, each of the five work groups will share the progress that's been made toward implementing Plan B, and also share the barriers that are present. Teaching and learning, operations, health, and we are fortunate to have with us this evening several officials from New Hanover County Public Health who will share their observations. Communications and finance will present. So with that, Madam Chair, and members of the board, I'd like to ask the leaders of the teaching and learning work group, Dr. Smith and Ms. Brinson, to please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Dr. Burns, and others viewing this presentation tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you updates from the teaching and learning work group.
We realize that as the district works to effectively plan the opening of the 2020 school year, this has been a challenging time for our families, teachers, students, administrators, and community as a whole. We have structured our presentation this evening to recognize the progress that we have made, but also to acknowledge the barriers that exist. But first, I would like to share with you that we have expanded the composition of our work group by adding classroom teachers. We recognize that the teacher's voice in this process is critical, and that the teacher's perspective gives shape and meaning to the educational practices.
As part of the remote learning plan, a teacher training plan has been developed and was shared with administrators. The plan will be reviewed with principals tomorrow. Some of the training topics include Remote Learning 101, CSOL, Google Classroom, Canvas, feedback in remote, giving feedback in remote settings, building community, and many more. There has been a training offered over the summer for high school teachers on how to move content from Google Classroom to Canvas in preparation of remote learning.
Of great interest and importance to our families, the district has developed a process for enrollment in virtual learning academies that are available to families wanting a full virtual option for their student. The virtual academy will serve students in grades kindergarten through 12, and will be taught, for the most part, by teachers that are associated with their child's school. Instruction will be primarily asynchronous, but there are opportunities for synchronous learning as well. The district is contracting with a third-party vendor to provide standards-aligned course shells that teachers will be able to enhance and personalize based on the needs of the learners they serve. Acceleration and enrichment will also, as well as opportunities, will also be present, as well as opportunities for reteaching in the virtual learning academies. Students do not need to unenroll from their current school, and the application for the virtual academy was launched this Friday, and at this point in time, we have 1,398 The majority of the questions we have received regarding the virtual academy have been related to grading, enrollment periods, and how instruction will be delivered. All district grading policies will be enforced for the 2020-21 school year, and we are asking families in grades K through 8 to commit to at least one non-weeks, and high school students to commit to at least one semester. As shared earlier, instruction will be primarily asynchronous. Unfortunately, we will not be able to offer every course in the virtual environment, but we are working to determine which ones will not be available due to such challenges as lab requirements or specialized equipment. All courses required for graduation will be available, as well as advanced placement Additionally, the teaching and learning work group has built capacity with principals in how to schedule students. Principals are working to group students alphabetically to provide a baseline, and then to move students based on need, both academic and family-based. We've had families requesting groupings or groups related to childcare, as well as carpooling, and for other reasons. Further, in our meeting yesterday, the work group developed a recommendation regarding how to employ substitute teachers and to cover classes in the event of teacher absences. Under Plan B, for short-term, one-to-four-day absences, and long-term, five or more absences, during the face-to-face, a substitute would be called from a preferred sub list for each school. These subs would have been previously trained on the learning management system and programs used at that particular school. For short-term absences that occur in the online environment, absences would be handled with the faculty of the school, and teachers would possibly be provided flex time for these additional responsibilities. E.C. teachers and other specialty areas would be handled on an individual basis. For long-term absences in the online environment, similar to what short-term, how short-term absences would be handled, but with the long-term coverage, teachers are recommended to receive a stipend. Absences in Plan C would follow the same process.
The technology department staff have been working hard all summer preparing laptops and iPads for students and teachers. Out of safety, the department is wiping all devices that were checked out over the spring. A lesson learned from the spring, we are adding a petition that will allow teachers in middle school and high school students to save files to the laptop hard drives. As you can imagine, thousands of laptops and iPads take time. By preparing every device ahead of time, this will allow for schools to check out devices when it's best for them. The plan is to check out laptops for middle schools and high schools, and iPads for elementary schools. The district is contracting with a third-party vendor to provide standards-aligned course shells that teachers will be able to enhance and personalize based on the needs of the learners they serve. Acceleration and enrichment, as well as opportunities for reteaching, are available at the virtual learning academies. Teachers will receive training in the use of the course shell. The district is also reviewing an application that will help teachers create and organize image, sound, and video files, including screen recordings to use with their instruction.
Providing greater standardization with the remote and online learning environment is in direct response to the feedback that we have received from both families and teachers. We have heard the concerns regarding the lack of rigor, the inconsistencies with the instructional design and delivery, curriculum misalignment, and unreasonable expectation during our emergency closure. Additionally, feedback from some teachers has been that expectations for delivering online instruction have been overwhelming, and that many teachers were unsure of where to begin or how to best meet the needs of their students. Also, feedback included those things that teachers believed were the most effective when working with their students, and the standardization related to the learning management system, and then the standardized course shells allow teachers to continue to utilize those strategies and tools. Further, the adoption of the third-party vendor course shells and specific learning management systems by grade spans is no different than what the district has done in the past in our standardization of K-5 writing curriculum, our K-5 reading curriculum, and our 6-8 math curriculum, as the district has worked to ensure equitable learning experiences for all students.
At this time, we would like to acknowledge some of the barriers that we're facing still. With the emergency school closure in the spring, teachers were forced to begin remote teaching without the training that New Hanover County Schools would have preferred they had, and did a remarkable job, given the circumstances. Teaching remotely is very different from teaching face-to-face and requires additional skills. Navigating the logistics of training all teachers and teacher assistance effectively on remote learning has been a barrier. The state makes changes to the guidelines in lighting our way forward, North Carolina's guidebook for reopening public schools on a weekly basis. There have been at least 20 updates since the guidebook was first released. These changes often require staff to make changes to procedures they have already created.
The impact of these frequent changes in these requirements has been challenging. There has been a lot of learning, as well as unlearning, and there have been instances where the guides from the state have not matched the information shared indicating the change. This has definitely led to additional frustration and, at times, confusion.
Connectivity for all students and teachers is critical, but also costly. We've been working on multiple solutions, including Wi-Fi access outside of school sites and county government sites, working with the county. A community group has been working on a way to provide free access in areas of high need, but this will take time. And the purchase of data for the hotspots we purchased in the spring. Now that we have data from the parent survey, we can begin to estimate where the access is needed and how many hotspots we need to purchase data for.
There have been additional costs as a result of the work to implement Plan B. As mentioned earlier, we've had to make investments in the learning management systems, additional teacher training, and third-party software to support online learning, including but not limited to the Discovery Ed Tech book for our fifth-grade students.
New Hanover County Schools takes great pride in what we've been able to accomplish with digital learning over the past years with the county's support. But even with that level of support, we have never been able to transition as a district to one-to-one instructional delivery due to lack of funding for equipment and personnel. However, we do have islands of innovation across the district. Some teachers have created a classroom environment where students have been able to thrive in their digital learning. COVID-19 has forced us, with the emergency school closure in the spring, to move into a one-to-one environment before we were ready. It is critical that the district have the opportunity to build continued skills and knowledge in our teachers and administrators to effectively deliver instruction in the remote learning environment.
And at this time, we would welcome any questions that you may have.
You were talking about the hotspots and trying to, I guess you could say, put them in place. How long is the estimate in order for us to do that so it can reach, I guess you can say, 99% of our kids, or the kids that really need it, that don't have access now?
Well, we have, different vendors have come forward with different offers, and we've gotten a really good pricing. I'm actually going to be coming to the August board meeting with a contract for AT&amp;T, working on the negotiations now with the board, making sure everything's where it needs to be in the contract. But, so once that gets signed and a purchase order gets cut, then we'll be able to activate those hotspots. We do have some that we typically have year-to-year. We're trying to get those back from the summer learning, and those are ones that we'll use at these restart schools in the year-round that start next week.
I guess my only concern was the piece on grading. You know, you look at a subject like math, and you take a fifth grader who's going into sixth grade, I mean, what is that going to look like? And, you know, there's certainly some equity questions there, but what is that going to look like? And when you say there's going to be reteaching allowed, will that also mean a different grade for a student?
So, as to the second part of your question, I apologize.
You mentioned the opportunity for reteaching?
Yes.
Does that allow for a different grade for a student?
So, to begin to respond to your question, in terms of grading, we will be enforcing the district's grading policies this year, which was very different than what occurred during our emergency closure, as I'm sure you remember. In terms of grading, we are also looking specifically in elementary to move toward more of a standards-based grading, so looking at the standards within our curriculum and evaluating a student's performance against that particular standard. So that means you still would get a grade for it, but instead of just simply looking at the assignment, we're looking at the learning. So often, what happens is we grade the work, but really, we need to evaluate what our children know, understand, and are able to do. So we need to grade the learning. So that is also part of the transition that we're working towards. But again, you know, you can't come to that end point all at the same time. In reference to reteaching, what I was speaking specifically to would be, when a teacher presents information for that first-time learning, if a student is not successful in that, then there would be opportunities for reteach. But that's also key, and part of the reason why we want to make sure that our teachers have enough time to plan, and that we're providing them with the resources that they need in order to be successful with the children that are in front of them, whether virtually or physically, is that there has to be the expectation that teachers not only look at their curriculum, but they look at previous curriculums and understand where the gaps are, and understand how you scaffold to the grade-level standard. Because again, at the end of the year, the expectation is for that child to be successful in the grade in which they're currently enrolled. And so I believe wholeheartedly, with the teachers that I know work in our district, and the administrators that I know are committed to supporting those teachers, we can successfully design that instruction in such a way to close that performance gap from last year to this year. But we have to give teachers the right training, the correct materials, the tools to do this work, and then make sure we're asking children to engage in the right work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Smith and Ms. Brinson, I have just a few questions. And first off, let me, I just want to say thank you for the addition of teachers to this task force discussion. I think that was a really important add, and I know that it's making it a very robust conversation. And I fully understand that there may not be answers for all of this yet. You mentioned that there's going to be a list of unavailable courses, per se, because there's just going to be challenges in a virtual environment. Do you have a general idea of when do you think that list is going to be available?
So, yes, I would say that we could offer a preliminary list, maybe by the end of the week. A good example of that might be drone technology, just simply because, you know, we're not able to fly drones in the online environment. And I've got a note here. And essentially, and the list may be different slightly if we're talking about the remote learning environment versus the virtual environment, but what But what we're looking at very honestly, and, and we even had some summer courses, some virtual summer courses. I think one of them was in carpentry. You know, if we have to put together kits to make sure that we can provide children as full a complement of the courses that we have in the district, we will. But again, there may be just those few courses because of the, the software requirements, the hardware requirements, or, um, just, you know, the lab requirements aren't available. But I would say to you that we could provide something more likely to the board by the end of the week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My second question, um, you said that it's, the, the learning will be predominantly asynchronous. Um, so I, I'm curious, and I'm, I'm saying this as a parent, as I know a lot of other parents are asking about that as well. The synchronous part, will that be one-on-one with the teacher are you envisioning, or will that be with the classroom, with classmates?
So we're, what we're talking about now is primarily in the virtual academy. And so we intentionally are making this synchronous, excuse me, asynchronous, I apologize. Um, primarily asynchronous because we want to provide that flexibility to our families. We understand that children are not necessarily going to be with their parents, who might be supporting them in their learning all day. Um, it may be that they're, um, with, with, um, someone who's, who, um, is, is just not in a position to, to do that. So it may be that parents need to be able to have the flexibility to support their students' learning in, 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 in the evening. I think the, the second part of your question was in regards to the asynchronous. So there will be opportunities for asynchronous, but those will be optional, options. Um, and that, in, in, in my mind, is probably going to be much more whole group. But for students who need additional intervention, those intervening services might be synchronous, but of course, depending on what might be synchronous, and they would be scheduled with the parent so that the parent could be present while the teacher is working one-on-one to give that child additional support. So just like in our face-to-face classrooms or, or in our brick-and-mortar schools, when students show up and the principal sets the expectation, I need you to tutor after school two or three times a week so that children have the opportunity for extended learning, those same expectations could be established in the online environment. So I need you as a classroom teacher to maintain office hours two to three times a week. And so teachers could schedule with students and their families, or families could schedule with the teachers for extra assistance. And that would be one-on-one or possibly small group, just depending on the need.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is just for the people that are watching, could you please describe what synchronous and asynchronous, uh, is to the public? Because a lot of the people, some of the language, and we tend to do this as educators, is jargon that we're used to, but the public isn't.
Yes, and thank you very much for that question, Ms. Justice. So asynchronous is when that, um, when the learning occurs at the time that is most convenient for the family. So it's not face-to-face, it's not live. Synchronous would be live learning, it would be face-to-face in that virtual environment.
By the way.
Dr. Smith, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Burns started off the, this conver, this topic basically saying the reason why we're going to Plan C is because we're not ready for Plan B, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Wardman.
Okay, so I, I guess, and I'm going to ask this because there are a bunch of specific work groups. We knew since, you know, we shut down second week or third week in March, um, school was canceled a couple of weeks later. What barriers are there, and again, from your specific work group, what barriers are there to giving parents a choice? And I'm glad you added teachers to the work room, I, I'm still pretty disappointed that parents have been totally shut out of this process. But, um, what barriers, um, would there be from your specific work group to using?
Problem with the sound?
Can you hear me, Jude?
Uh, mine can't, David.
You can hear me or you cannot hear me?
I can hear you now, but you missed a paper, I'm not sure, that was a problem with anyone else.
Uh, did you, did anyone hear me?
Oh, you, you went out of sound for a while.
Oh, sorry. Um, I, I guess my question is, is since we began planning this back in May, what barriers under Plan B are there from implementing your specific work group?
So what I would say is probably the greatest barrier for us is ensuring that what we provide to families is of the highest quality. We heard the feedback from our teachers, we heard the feedback from our, our families in that the remote learning that occurred during our emergency closure did not meet the expectations of, of many of them. Um, there definitely were folks who were very pleased, there are definitely teachers who went above and beyond and actually exceeded expectations. But overall, the feedback, for, for the most part, that I've heard has been that we missed our mark as a district in ensuring the high-quality instruction, the, the meaningful learning opportunities were, were present for all students in an equitable manner. And so I would say to you that the biggest barrier for us is ensuring that that happened day one for all of our students. Um, not, you know, just those who have the resources to supplement what the district is doing, but, but for all of our students. And I think second to that would be, um, ensuring that we have the, um, financial resources and human resources to execute that as well. And so with the human resources, really the teachers and the staff that are in place and are well-trained, and then the funding to provide those supplemental services and programs that would be needed to effectively implement Plan B. I, I would identify those as the major barriers.
So you're, when you say human resources, are you referring to, I, I guess I'm confused. Are you saying that teachers are unwilling to come back? Is that what you're inferring?
So I'm not saying that teachers are unwilling to come back. Um, I would say at this point, I am not completely sure. Of all the, the staffing options and the staffing needs, we're still gathering information from families about the options that they want to see in terms of virtual learning, um, as well as gathering information from teachers about, um, the situations in which they could come back to the district and, and, and the role and capacity that they could serve in. So not saying that, you know, teachers not wanting to come back is the issue, but just not understanding all the logistics of that definitely impacts the scheduling on the part of the teaching and learning.
Okay. I, I guess, that's kind of a roundabout, I, I think that it's kind of a roundabout way to saying that you're going to have staffing issues if you open up the schools. But I think the only way that you actually know if you're going to have the staff issues is actually if you open up the schools. And, and that's why when you're talking about equity, I think that not opening up the schools creates a huge gap in equity by not having that face-to-face instruction or not giving parents the option of that face-to-face instruction. I mean, I think, I think ultimately that's from your specific work group. That's why I asked the question of what the barrier is for Plan B. And it, to me, it didn't sound like there really was much of a barrier other than the fact that you don't know if there's going to be staffing for people to teach in school. Is that fairly accurate, Dr. Smith?
I would say, again, that I, for us, it really is about the quality of instruction. Um, I think we will be able to answer the questions about staffing once that information is made available to us from human resources. So I don't know.
Do, do you not agree that the quality of instruction would be better face-to-face than virtual?
What I would say is, I, I think that our children, if, if the instruction, I, well, based on the information I've gotten, I think that all of our families would have a preference for, for schools to be face-to-face and to be safe places for their students to receive instruction. But there are concerns in, in reference to that. And so preparing for Option B, because again, I believe the preferred option would be Option A. But in preparing for Option B, what I've heard very clearly from, from, from families is they don't want the remote learning to look the way that it did when we went into emergency closure. So we want to, again, assure them that that's not what's going, going to happen. We want to make sure that that high quality is there. When it comes to the staffing piece, again, what we need in terms of the teaching and learning and how we support principals is just simply to have that information and then build a schedule out around that. And at this point, we don't know, so there, there are certain things that we're speculating about. But really, I think it lands down to having the teachers, making sure that they have the, the training that they need to be effective, having the materials and the access, and then delivering it in an effective way to all of our students with, within the district. So it's, it's one that, that def, uh, this, this process definitely leans on itself. So we can't have the instruction without having the work that's being done in the other work groups as well.
And I, this is, these are difficult, but again, I still think that you're, I, I understand that your, your focus is on remote learning and making sure remote learning is better. Because, um, obviously, we were throwing some curveballs back in March and, and we adapted the best we can. And I think that's what you're saying, you're making sure remote learning is better.
Yes.
But you're ignoring the fact that there still is the possibility of face-to-face. And the reason why we're not doing face-to-face is because we're not ready. So from your standpoint, when will be, we be ready for face-to-face learning? How quickly can the school get face-to-face learning? Because they've been planning on this probably since, for the last three months, I would imagine.
So speaking specifically for teaching and learning, we need just the additional time to train our staff and to make sure that the pieces that we need in terms of curriculum and instruction are available to our, to, to our folks in order to be ready. So, so again, speaking specifically and only to our work group, which is around teaching and learning. Um, the other work groups, of course, can speak to what it would take from their perspective to be ready for, for Plan B. But again, I'm speaking just solely to teaching and learning.
So from your, your opinion, um, solely from your work group, not, not worry about any of the other work group, you do not feel that you can execute under Plan B? Is that, is that accurate?
So I'm not saying that we can't execute under Plan B. What I am, I'm saying is that the quality that I believe families expect, um, we need additional time to ensure that we've done everything that we can do to have in place the resources, um, to support teachers and to support families so that it is a high-quality learning experience.
Dr. Smith, can you elaborate more on the training of our teachers?
Yes, well, and actually, I'll step back and let Ms. Brinson speak a little bit more specifically to that.
So yes, our, our plan is to provide training for teachers on the remote learning systems that we have actually, the learning management systems that we have actually standardized on. Um, we, we heard the parents, you know, we heard people say, you know, there was too many different options that they had to manage between Google Classroom, Seesaw, Canvas. So we need to make sure that our teachers are trained, um, we have procured the, the tools, and we are working on the training. Um, they also need training on just remote learning in general, because teaching remotely is different. The way you provide feedback to students is different in a remote learning environment than it is in a face-to-face environment. So time to train the teachers on that, as well as these shells that we have purchased to help teachers to be able to devise and create the best instruction for our kids so that all kids are getting the, the rigorous, you know, instruction that they deserve.
And when will you do this with the teachers? They don't have a lot of workdays or time.
Well, they have been opportunities, we did share some remote learning stuff even back in the spring. Some people have taken advantage of that. Um, some people have taken advantage of some opportunities over the summer. Um, but we definitely, in the workdays, will be, if they haven't done it then, we'll be asking them to participate in the trainings at that point in time. But you're right, there's, there's, there is some workdays at the beginning of the year, but there's not an abundance of them.
Would you suggest, knowing all this, and, and I mean, you guys are literally reinventing a school on, I, I, I'm impressed and amazed and awed because having worked in schools for probably twenty-five or more years, what you're doing is incredible, all across the country. Um, would you suggest or say that possibly we definitely need more training, uh, professional development for the teachers? I mean, we're aiming for a date of August the seventeenth for the students to come back where we were originally? Um, and if we go to C, would, wouldn't it be, I, I, I'm just asking here, more logical to have more, more week, or weeks possibly of professional development before they go, or at least a week? I mean, August seventeenth does not seem like enough time for professional development to, just for everything that we're trying to do. I mean, that's even including, if we were doing in classroom with the distancing and the mask and the limitations and the changing of schedules and all that, um, would, is August seventeenth realistic?
Dr. Burns, that's a state mandated date, correct? August seventeenth can't be changed.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, August seventeenth is designated by the legislature.
Do I have to start back by that date?
We have to start on that date.
Start on that date.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's where that is a definite part.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, I'd heard that, but I'm trying to, okay. Wow. Over the legislature.
Any further questions for Ms. Brinson and Dr. Smith? Thank you both very much for your hard work and for your leadership with your work group.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson is going to share information from the operations work group.
All right, good evening. The, uh, the operations work group, our departments, staff, been working hard to plan and develop procedures to ensure, um, the health and safety of students, staff, and teachers. It's a lot like putting together a jigsaw puzzle. We, uh, we, we got the card table out, we set it up in the living room, we emptied the box, we turned over all the pieces, and we immediately began to sort them. We assign one group the edges, because we all know if you're going to put together a jigsaw puzzle, that's where you start, right? Um, and then we assigned other groups on working in select areas of our puzzle. And however, along the way, we quickly realized that some of the pieces were missing and perhaps others didn't belong at all. Um, a lot of progress has been made on our puzzle, but there's still some missing pieces or barriers to us completing our task. And tonight, I'd like to focus on just three areas of operations, child nutrition, transportation, and facilities. I'll give you an update on the progress made in each area, and then I'll talk a little bit about the missing puzzle pieces or barriers for us completing our task. So in child nutrition, we'll start there. And under Plan B, uh, our child nutrition employees will be, will continue to prepare food in our school kitchens. They'll be following strict food safety and sanitation procedures from the USDA, OSHA, the Department of Health and Human Services, and North Carolina DPI. All students under Plan B will eat in their classroom. Secondary students will take advantage of school meals, uh, or secondary students taking advantage of school meals will utilize the cafeteria serving lines and return to their classrooms on a continuous staggered schedule with additional points of sale for social distancing. Elementary school students will be served in their classroom. All meals will be individually packaged for direct service to students. There will be a limited menu and students must preorder meals. We will maintain our high nutritional standards. At the secondary level, we will offer or, uh, so, a selection of à la carte items. Missing pieces or barriers to this plan? It's still unknown today whether or not we'll be operating. It's still unknown today whether or not we'll be operating under the Summer Food Service Program or the National School Lunch Program. We're currently operating under Summer Food Service, and that's through August 31st. There's a push at the state legislature to have that extended through the 2020-21 school year. And the reason is the National School Lunch Program is more restrictive. It requires us to identify and feed only those students enrolled in New Hanover County schools. Students must be engaged in instruction on that day they receive meals, and meals must be consumed on-site unless we're able to receive waivers. There's currently no application or process for students to preorder meals. Preordering is likely going to be on a Google Doc or perhaps just done by paper, and collecting this information will most likely fall on the teacher. Distribution of meals to the classrooms, training teachers, and providing additional cleaning materials is also a challenge. Distribution of meals to students on remote work weeks. Currently, state transportation funds cannot be used during the 2020-21 school year to assist in distribution of meals to students. Consequently, we'll be limited to curbside grab-and-go service only. Social distancing, mask-wearing while serving meals, distributing meals, eating, et cetera, will also be a challenge to enforce. And finally, many of our child nutrition staff are still unsure if returning to work at this time is safe, given current conditions and perhaps personal health. Under transportation, Plan B, to promote social distancing on the bus, no more than one student is permitted to a seat. Exceptions can be made for family members. This will significantly reduce the capacity of our school bus. A typical elementary bus holds 72 students. Under these requirements, our capacity will be reduced to 24, perhaps 25 or 26. To offset this reduction, we're working on a plan that will require us to enforce safe school walk zones. It will require us to combine individual bus stops into fewer community stops. We will be required to shorten routes and will be required to double up routes, which you remember last year caused many delays. All students K through 12 riding a school bus must wear face coverings unless there's an exception due to developmental, medical, or behavioral health needs. If a student cannot wear a face covering, they'll be required to complete a form to notify transportation. Forms are available at the schools or online, and students who do not wear a face covering on the bus must remain socially distanced six feet from other people on the bus. This will further reduce our bus capacity and perhaps require adjustments in bus routes during the school year. Hand sanitizer will be available on the school transportation vehicles for safe use by employees and older children. Touch points, including doors, windows, grab handles, armrests, door handles, seat belts, will be cleaned and disinfected between each bus run. Every bus will be cleaned and disinfected between morning and afternoon runs and at the end of the day. The most challenging part of transportation is families will be required to print, complete, and sign an attestation form daily for each student. Health officials advise that screening children at home and completing the form daily should reduce students' risk of exposure to illness while riding the bus. Every student must show the driver their attestation form. If a student does not have an attestation form, they will be asked symptom screening questions before they board the bus. Because of this, at the elementary level, a responsible adult or older sibling is required to wait with the children or wait with that student at the bus stop until screening is complete and can help that child return home should health considerations indicate they are not able to board the bus. All bus riders will be expected to wear face coverings. If they do not have one, one will be required or they have an approved exception. After arriving at school, bus riders will be asked the symptom checklist questions and have temperature checks. For students with limited communication or more extensive needs, screening will include dialogue with parent or adult caregivers at the bus stop. The missing pieces to our puzzle or barriers to implementation for transportation. Typically, we begin each year with bus routes from the previous year, and we make adjustments as students are assigned to schools and we begin the bus year, or school year. This year, due to redistricting, we're beginning from scratch. So not knowing which students will ride the bus has caused significant delays in preparation and assignments. We're now getting that information and we're working on it. It's just very late in the process. Schools might be on different schedules. Our traditional calendars will start Week 1, 2, 3, but our year-round calendars have already been started. During the school year, it's quite possible, well, it will happen, where our traditional calendars are in Week 1, our year-round calendars may be in Year 2 or 3. This is an extreme challenge for our Transportation Department to keep up with. It may require changing routes on a weekly basis and certainly changing the route that a particular driver will run. We're trying to create community routes so that in our traditional schools, we'll have consistent routes across the different weeks. But that is, it's very hard to do, but that is our goal, and that's what we're working on. Different routes also mean parent portal may not be available to schools and parents. I talked about the capacity of buses and the requirement for masks unless there are an exception... Is there an exception? So on a 72-passenger bus, if everyone's wearing a mask, we can have 24 students on the bus. If one person is without a mask, that capacity drops to 20. If two people do not have a mask, that capacity drops to 14. And with five or more not wearing masks, that capacity drops to eight. Health screening at the bus stop? Who does this? Is it the schoolperson assigned to each bus? Is it the driver? There's not a good answer for that. The time required for screening on the routes further delays our buses. And most important, what do we do with an elementary school student that arrives at the bus stop without a parent, without an attestation form, and health considerations indicate that they are not able to board the bus? We are just learning now what students will be attending face-to-face instruction and requiring bus transportation. And again, many drivers, as with our child nutrition workers, are still unsure if returning to work is safe under current conditions and personal health reasons. Looking at our facilities, our buildings will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected throughout the day and every evening. Multiple times a day, our custodians will perform the following duties, among others: sweeping, mopping, cleaning in the cafeteria, cleaning and disinfecting water fountains, cleaning bathrooms, monitoring hand sanitizers, wiping and disinfecting the high-traffic, high-touch areas throughout the building, such as hallways, staircases, hand railing. And in classrooms, there's also the requirement that horizontal surfaces and high-touched areas or shared items be wiped down between classes. All disinfectants that we're using are on the EPA-approved list for COVID-19. The cleaning and disinfecting protocols are consistent with CDC guidelines and will continue to be reviewed and enhanced in terms of frequency and intensity. Students will be prohibited from drinking from the water fountain directly. That's part of the guidelines. All students are encouraged to bring their own water bottle or reusable bottles. Water bottles should be clearly labeled with the user's name, and if a student does not have one, they can request a cup from the administration. Some of the missing pieces and challenges or barriers that we've identified for our facilities, we have very limited backup for staff members that are testing positive and/or required to quarantine due to possible exposure. We do not have full-time custodial stubs like we do with teachers. We've had instances over the summer where we have lost entire custodial teams at schools. We've utilized our maintenance folks to fill in as much as possible, and we have also had to resort to pulling custodians from other schools to fill those needs. That's easier done in the summer. I don't know that that would be quite a challenge or certainly a barrier during the school year. Cleaning classrooms between classes, one of the barriers has been who does this and how long does it take? We originally had recommended teachers doing this, but if teachers are doing this, then who's supervising students in the hallway and enforcing social distance and mask-wearing? So we need to continue to work through that procedure as well. In summary, I would just say that opening under Plan B is not an impossible task, it's just never been done before. We are creating procedures for something that hasn't been done, and because the health and safety of our students, teachers, and staff is our number-one priority, additional time is needed. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you, any of the board, may have.
Yes, Mr. Anderson. Why did you lose those custodial teams over the summer, the way you just described?
We've had instances where some of our staff have tested positive or have had a possible exposure to someone who tested positive.
Thank you for that. And also, you were talking about on the buses and transportation, someone checking the student's temperature if they didn't have an attestation form? And also, you're going to have to enforce the mask, the seating? In fact, you said if you don't have, one or two students doesn't have masks, then the requirements change. Who would be doing that besides the driver? I mean, the driver's got his hands full with everything else. Would he be expected to do all of that, or would there be somebody to have to be assigned to each bus to do that?
We are looking at schools identifying people to be assigned to buses to be that screener at each school. So if you have non-buses at your school, you would need to identify non-screeners, and our buses would report to that school, pick up the screeners, run their routes, and then those screeners could exit the buses when the routes are done.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a few questions. Thank you for all that information. Just, you mentioned if we were to be in Plan C, child nutrition would continue to be working and preparing meals. What would bus drivers be doing?
Well, that's a good question, and I hope that very soon, the state will provide us some additional guidance. Right now, we cannot use our state funds beyond August, beyond the first day of instruction. We cannot use state funds for buses and drivers working to deliver meals in child nutrition. We're hoping that that changes and that under Plan C, we could go back to a program that looks very similar to what we were doing earlier this summer. And we would be using drivers and buses for delivering meals to remote sites.
Great, thank you. And just my last question that I had, in Plan B, you mentioned the challenges that would come with pickup and the reduced number of students on the buses. What time would you anticipate would be the earliest pickup time that a family would face in Plan B?
We have not gotten to the point where I could give you a time, but because at the elementary level especially, we will be planning on doubling routes. That will require us to start earlier. And what I mean by that is, you know, a bus, a driver would run a route, if they were running routes for Freeman Elementary School. They would, and they were assigned two routes. What we want to do is pick the longest route, they would run that one first, drop off those kids, and then go back and do the shorter route. So some drivers, some routes will be doubled up. Which, in answer to your question, I don't have a specific time, but would very likely move those times up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Anderson, once the students arrive at school, is there another screening process? And who would do that?
There is, that's a very good question. Because we're only requiring the attestation form at the bus stop, then students who, or bus riders, would go through the same screening process as all the other students at that school. And schools now are looking at their facilities and trying to determine how many entry points would be required to accommodate potentially 500 students. Obviously, you would need to break that down. I think in some cases, you may have as many as six or eight entry points at a school like Higginson or New Hanover. But the schools would identify screeners, and they would be provided all of the PPEs and thermometers to implement that process.
For an elementary school, when you're talking about upwards of 600 young students, six feet apart, you know, one by one, are we going to be able to start school on time when we do get into B? I mean, that seems like quite a, seems like a bit of an undertaking.
Yeah, I think in an elementary school, especially if we're only, we're looking at alternating weeks or once every three weeks. So you divide that number into, break them up into thirds, so you've got 200 students, you would certainly have a minimum of two. I would think your bus riders would come in one entry, and your car riders would come in another. So I would say at the elementary schools, depending on the number of students in the layout of that school, you would at least have two. But under the best of circumstances, yes, it will take a while to get those students screened.
Mr. Anderson, you said the first day of instruction. I'm assuming you mean August 17th, not next week, which is when we start year-round?
No, it is next week.
It is next week.
So we could not use state funds beyond the first day of instruction, which for New Hanover County Schools is next week.
Okay. So is that for, is that, okay, so...
That's statewide.
Okay.
Do you have an idea of what child nutrition will look like if the state doesn't come through?
I think it's going to look just like it looks right now. We dropped back later in the summer to our more traditional food service program. As the governor moved into the second phase and started loosening up restrictions, we dropped back to a more typical Summer Food Service program. We've seen some fall off in our numbers, which was anticipated, but we are still serving today more students than we served last summer, or more students. So I think if we're not able to expand that, should we open under Plan C, at the very least, we may open additional curbside grab-and-gos at more schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I appreciate your presentation. All right, so y'all have been kind of working on this since back in May, when we knew that at some point, school was going to start back, correct?
Correct.
And I'm listening to a lot of the things that you're saying, the Summer Food Service versus the National Lunch, School Lunch Service is an issue, but isn't necessarily an issue versus the national lunch, school lunch service is an issue, but isn't necessarily an issue that involves Plan B or Plan C?
Well, the serving of school, the serving of school-aged children would be different under both those plans. So I think it's an issue under either Plan B or Plan C.
Okay, good. You've said a couple of things about parents being responsible and worried that parents aren't responsible, about, you know, the attestation form or sending a child to a stop that may have symptoms. I think that, me personally, that we're really underestimating and discounting parents. We're talking about school buses and their capacity. I think that we've found that a majority of the parents actually want to have face-to-face instruction, even if that's 55 or 60 percent. So automatically, we're cutting down the population of our schools by upwards of 40 to 45 percent, giving parents those choices. You know, if we're going to, if we were to give them the choice to get back in schools, can't we put requirements on those parents that if kids are going to come to school, they need to wear masks unless they have a doctor's note on the school bus? If kids are going to come to school and take the school bus, then they need to be with a responsible adult, an adult? I mean, basically, we're asking them, under Plan C, if they can't watch a Zoom or an iPad, then they're going to need, the parents are going to need to teach the kids based on a lesson plan that's provided from the school. Don't you think that parents would be motivated to actually do right and get their kids on the bus appropriately if we gave them that option?
Well, we're certainly giving them that option, and I think that if, even if a child shows...
If we approve Plan C, we're not giving them that option.
Well, I'm referring to Plan B. We're certainly giving them that option, and if a child comes to the bus stop and doesn't have a mask, we'll provide one to them.
Right.
As far as requiring the mask, that is not consistent with the guidelines nor the legal advice we've been given. I'm not sure that the Board of Education could make that requirement. That would be something to discuss...
What legal advice are you referring to?
I'm sorry, what?
What legal advice?
The legal advice we've had from Ms. Stagner in terms of requiring students to wear masks. There are...
If I might, this is Deborah. We are still reviewing that. I don't know that we've given a final guidance. There are some, certainly, schools are required to have all students and staff wear masks. There are some exceptions. We are sorting through when those exceptions can apply and what sorts of requirements are placed on those. For example, students who may have disabilities and have trouble wearing masks. So I certainly think that's still a question that is under review, and we're trying to give the best guidance, but I don't know that we have the answers to that yet from a legal perspective.
In general, Ms. Stagner, that we can require masks, but there are certainly some exceptions. Because I think the guidance actually changed, if I remember correctly. Originally, it was, was it 10 and over or 11 and over required masks? And then they actually, when they came out with the new information, they said anyone had to wear masks. Isn't that correct?
The executive order says age 11 and over, but the DHHS has said that does not apply to the public schools. So the public school guidance is all students, kindergarten through 12 and staff. There are exceptions, and the question that is not clear from the guidance, either from DHHS or the governor's office, is when those exemptions apply in the school, how they are applied, what accommodations need to be given, and whether students can be required to stay at home with virtual learning. And so those are, again, those are a lot of competing rights and competing statutory obligations, and we're really working to try to come up with the best advice that we can on that.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, one last question. We've talked about, I think we talked about at the last meeting, this 50 percent capacity, which unfortunately, I think people have confused what 50 percent capacity is. It's actually fire capacity. I'm sure that you've broken it down by school, but using, you know, a 60 to 70 percent face-to-face of students, have you actually gone school by school to see how many kids you actually can safely get in the building utilizing these classrooms? Because I know, although it's, a lot of people probably don't know about this, we're actually using one of our schools right now as a school, or the Freedom School. They've been going for six weeks with 50 students, been able to look at what they've been doing as a way to kind of help us figure out. I mean, I think we should be able to figure it out, but look at what they're doing to help us open up under a Plan B scenario?
We have. We're providing transportation and other services, and we, and child nutrition services, and we have been looking at that and seeing how it's going. In that particular case, we're following the procedures that I outlined. Because of the small number of students, I think we've been able to accommodate them. We put a, we put a reduced capacity on the bus, expecting some of the issues. As far as school capacity, the 50 percent occupancy requirement did go away in the latest revision, so that's no longer a factor. The only limiting factor we have in our schools is six-foot social distancing, and we have provided some guidance to all of our principals. It's a booklet that shows six-foot social distancing in various classrooms and other spaces of various shapes, sizes, and the type of furniture that they have. Obviously, six-foot social distancing in tables is different from six-foot social distancing in individual desks and chairs. We have set up the facility planning and construction department. Leann Lawrence is the point of contact for principals to get in touch with if they have questions or just want someone to come out and look at it, say, does this look like it meets the intent? Some of the problems or challenges we've had is that some of our older buildings in particular have smaller classrooms, and they're not able to fit as many students with the social distancing requirement. So they're actually looking at some non, or use of non-traditional classroom space. That's another area that facility planning will help them to ensure that if we're setting up classrooms in the media center or the multipurpose room, that we're not going against any building or fire codes.
And thank you for doing that, because that is important to have that information. I guess one follow-up. When will, because again, at the beginning of the meeting, Dr. Burns said the reason why we're in this situation is we're not ready. When will you be ready to open up schools?
Well, I think the recommendation of the first grading period is a reasonable recommendation, and I think that right now, there's still a lot of unknowns, and perhaps when some of those answers or questions get answered, you know, perhaps we'll, you could open up sooner. But I think at this time, the, it's a reasonable recommendation of the first grading period.
And the unknowns would be the testing, the amount of people on a bus, is that, those things?
All of the above. I mean, there's still some unknowns for health and safety. There's still unknowns from state guidance, and there's still unknowns from funding, and we're still working through some of the logistics to implement.
Watch out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Next, we'll hear from Ms. Varnum and Mr. Manzo, the Health, excuse me, Work Group, and they will introduce our guests from Public Health at the appropriate time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Burns. On behalf of the Health Work Group, I would like to welcome our partners with Public Health to join at the podium. We have Mr. Philip Tartt, the Director for Public Health for New Hanover County, Carla Turner, Assistant Director for New Hanover County, Lisa Brown, our Public Health Preparedness Coordinator, and also Kate Oslager, Communications and Outreach Coordinator. And I'd like for them to provide you an update, and then we'll go, Mr. Manzo and I will go into the details of our Health Work Group. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Brown, and I'm just going to provide a brief update as to where we are in our status of cases of COVID-19 in New Hanover County. So as of a few hours ago this afternoon, we've reported out 2,283 laboratory confirmed cases. And of those, roughly 9 percent of our cases have been those aged 0 to 17, and roughly around 40 percent have been those aged 25 to 49, which would be the bulk of the workforce for the school system. So over the last several weeks, we have observed what appears to be sort of a plateauing of our cases, which is very good news. However, I would share some caution, though, that even though we have seen a relative plateauing over the last few weeks, it's a plateau that's fairly high. So we're still seeing, you know, around 300 cases a week. So that still is very good news, but that's much a higher level of transmission than we would like to see in the community. And as we've said all along, that as we continue to have a lot of transmission within the community, that will make it harder to keep it from those that are going to be most vulnerable to have severe outcomes from COVID-19. For context, when this began, it took us roughly a month to reach 68 cases, and now we have days where we top higher than 68 cases in a single day. And sadly, as of this afternoon, we've also reported out that 17 of our neighbors have passed away from COVID-19. And according to our hospital partner's update last Friday, 309 individuals have been hospitalized there to date. Now granted, those are not all New Hanover County residents, because it's a regional hospital, and the average number hospitalized last week that they reflected out was 46. So that's just where we are right now as far as our level of transmission, and then I'd invite Carla to talk a little bit more about the work group.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to come speak with you. I'm going to speak to how we are preparing at the Health Department and working with Ms. Varnum and the school system to prepare when our school nurses return to school and how we're going to work to make things, to meet the guidelines. Our school nurses do not return until August 11th, so they are 10-month employees, and the bulk of them have been out since June 15th. So they will not return to school until August 11th. When they do return, our first priority is going to be to bring them up to speed with the latest guidelines and updates, so that we can get them trained and give them the guidance, so then they can be prepared to train staff in the schools. We have been part of a task force. We have a task force of school nurses that is dedicated to ironing out the protocols that are going to be needed for faculty and staff in collaboration with Central Office. My two school nursing supervisors have been meeting with Ms. Varnum to talk about the best way to roll out training and how to get those protocols in place. We have been a part of developing the protocols for screening, as well as protocols for managing cases, how to manage it if a student comes to school who's not well, how to track students, how to report, and all those things that go along with communicable disease. And we also have put together two videos with New Hanover County Schools Television. Some of our staff worked with Michael at NHCS TV, and so they have put together and released a video on hand hygiene, as well as one on showing the staff how to complete the staff screening tool. So that's kind of what we're doing right now, preparing, working with the school system, so when our school nurses come back, they can continue to be the subject matter experts that you'll need them to be. I'm going to ask Kate to come speak about this information.
Good evening. Just wanted to provide a very brief sort of update on where we are since we visited with you last time regarding COVID-19 in terms of communications and information sharing. We, New Hanover County is still activated in emergency operations in response to COVID-19. Today is our 99th day of activation, and part of that is the Joint Information Center, which is a collaborative group of New Hanover County and our partners across the community to coordinate messaging and information sharing. And the school system has been an incredible partner in doing that. And over the course of April, we were able to collaborate with the school system to share testing, access to testing and protective measure information with your families and students through the Meal Distribution Program, which is an incredible partnership, and we've worked to really kind of innovate on how we're getting that message across to different areas of our community over the last couple of months. We plan to continue to do that and really maximize exposure, especially from those shared messaging regarding the three Ws, wearing and face covering, waiting six feet apart, washing our hands. We've heard it and will continue to hear it quite a bit. But for the continued awareness of our partners and the community, your students and families, Public Health publishes data daily on the website that gives case count and demographic information, and every Friday, we send a more elaborate and comprehensive report with some more detailed data around outbreaks in the community, hospitalizations, and different data points from partners as well. And that can be found at health.nhcgov.com/coronavirus. And of course, if you have any questions, we can help answer those now.
I have one question. Positivity rates, the state was at 8 percent. What are we at in New Hanover County this past week?
So the data that we have for the last week isn't really complete, so I wouldn't hang your hat on that too much. From what the state has shared with us and understand, it's not a perfect measure, because what they're reflecting to us is only what they call ELR, which means it's only what's electronically reported to the state public health lab, so it is a very limited amount. But if you look at it over time, at least it's an apples-to-apples comparison, so you can see a trend. I believe that this week... I realize I have the report, so I don't have to speculate. I can actually read it. So the last week that the data was available and shared with us at the Public Health Department, it reflected a 12.5 percent positivity rate, which is very, very high. But again, like I just said, that is likely to go down, because that's not a complete measure, and it will fluctuate for the most recent data points. The week before that, they reflected it to be roughly 7.5 percent. Again, that one is likely to go up from what we've seen from trends as they get all of the data in there. But the few weeks before that, it was hovering in the 9.9, 9.7, 9.3 range, which is awfully close to 10, and we don't want to be there. So I guess in summary, over beginning early July, end of June, early July, we saw it was rising. So the weeks before that, 5.6, 7.3, 7.2, and then going up to 9.9, 9.6, 9.3. So positivity rate is something that you're going to look at in addition to the actual case numbers and the case count. There's a lot of discussion about as you would test more, you'd expect to find more cases, but if you're also having a high positivity rate, it's not just a function of testing, because you also find a lot more negative cases. So you look at those two measures together. Unfortunately, they're trending the wrong direction. It'll be a couple more weeks before we really understand what the last two weeks looks like, just because it takes a little while for all the data points to get together. But what we have complete data on, basically looking in the rearview mirror three weeks to six weeks, it's higher than we'd like it to be by quite a bit.
I keep hearing the number from the state, about that 5 percent mark, and that being sort of a benchmark, a goal that we really want to see before we can start, you know, opening larger. Can you explain the 5 percent mark and why that means something?
I think that that might have come from the WHO, might be where that 5 percent had originally come from. And again, it's just kind of reflecting that you have lots of testing going on. You're casting a very, very wide net. Yes, you're catching some more positive cases, but you're also finding a lot more negative cases. It reduces the risk... It, it reduces the risk that you have a lot of cases not being identified if you have a, a very low positivity rate. So, that's why that's a metric that you'll, you'll hear Public Health talk about and look to.
Thank you.
Could I ask you a question, please? Hello?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Say somebody was a teacher or a student was to, or somebody in the central, in the main office of the school, was to show symptoms, and suddenly during the day. So, they needed to be tested. How available is that test, and how long would it take to get the results back? And what does that mean to the people that they have been in contact with during that day?
Well, I'll take a stab at that and then look to Carla to, to clean up anything I say incorrectly. Unfortunately, what we've seen the last few weeks is the testing has slowed down, so it's taking longer to get test results than it had been. I think you're, it's going to be at least three to five days. We've heard some labs as long as seven?
Seven, seven to 10 with some labs, just because of the influx of testing that is coming to them. Yes, we, we deal with a lab, as far as, I probably should set the mic up. The range for our state lab is about five to seven days. The range for private labs depends, is anywhere, some are three to five, some are seven. And there are those I've heard that have been waiting 10 days before they get their results. As far as availability, there are several places in New Hanover County that folks can be tested. And you can actually call our call center at 798-6800. They can refer you to where you can go to find that list of places that are available in New Hanover County. You can also go to the state DHHS website and click the button for Find My Testing Site, put in your zip code, and it will show you what tests, what testing sites are available in that area. So, and what would happen? If someone was positive, we would be, they would get a call from Public Health. When we get their positive result, Public Health nurse, nursing staff is going to reach out to them, give them their control measures, tell them they need to stay home, and what they need to do to take care of themselves. And then we're gonna ask them about close contacts. Close contacts are defined as within six feet for at least sustained 10 minutes. So, walking somebody, by somebody in the hall is not a close contact. Waiting behind them in line at the vending machine is not a close contact. It's those folks that you've been around for at least 10 minutes within six feet. So, that's what we would identify. Our staff would then call those folks and let them know they were a close contact to a positive case and talk to them about testing and what their options were.
So, is that, is that the expectation of the school nurse to also be doing the, like, the initial scanning, temperature scanning for staff as well? Will that be within the auspices of the school nurse?
The school nurse would not be doing the scanning of the temperature. That would you, I'm sorry, is that what you asked me when they came in? No, ma'am, we will be working with the school system and school staff will be there, because the school nurses will be serving as a resource, but also doing all their other school nursing responsibilities as well.
So, we have to establish the protocols for that?
So, basically, it's gonna take at least, say, five days before we will know to start checking the people that they had contact with as far as a possibility, say, they did test positive?
Yes, ma'am. We would not tell anyone they were a close contact until we had a confirmed positive case. And I will say, you know, with it being, we call it respiratory season, for lack of a better word, coming up with flu season, there're gonna be a lot of respiratory illnesses out there in the community. So, we would not say anyone's a close contact until we had a confirmed positive case. And when we let them know they're a close contact, we do not tell them who they were a close contact to. That's a HIPAA violation. We can't share that. Thank you.
Ms. Turner, if I could ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
How many school nurses are there, and are you currently fully staffed?
I will take the second one first. We are not currently full staff. We are interviewing right now. We had some retirements over the summer, and we've had some resignations. And we've actually had a couple, we had two nurses promoted, one to a supervisor and one to a team leader on a different team. So, when we are fully staffed, we will have 41 school nurses.
And currently, you have how many vacancies?
Oh, gosh, six.
Six.
Ms. Turner?
Can I ask one quick question?
I have a question.
May I ask one more question? We talked about close contact with six feet. Does that take into account wearing masks?
Wearing masks, if both parties are wearing masks, it does reduce the risk. It does not negate the risk. So, we are still sticking, and Lisa can correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly. We are still staying with within six feet for 10 minutes. But to your point, the wearing masks certainly does potentially cut down on the transmission.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it substantially cuts down on the possibility of contracting if you're wearing masks, correct?
Yes, if both people are wearing masks, that's, that's what you want. Because when I'm wearing this mask right now, I'm not, I'm not protected from Lisa if she didn't have her mask on. Lisa's protected from me, because I have a mask on, and my mask is catching anything, catching my stuff. That's what I say, you keep your stuff to yourself when you have your mask on. So, yes, if both parties are wearing masks, you have greatly reduced the risk of transmission.
And assuming that both parties are wearing the mask correctly?
Correctly, not like this.
We've seen a lot of people wearing masks, which has been wonderful, but we've also seen a lot of folks that aren't wearing it appropriately, aren't covering the nose or have it down around the chin. So, that's a critical piece of it.
Yes, good point, thank you.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
I wanted to ask a question about the responsibility of the nurse. They're there to serve all the students and give medication and work with the parents. If there is a person in the building that there is a suspect that they have COVID, how do they isolate that student away from, from others and from the nurse? Because the nurse has other responsibilities.
Sure. We have, are working with the school system, looking back at Ms. Varnum. We are working with the school system to, to identify an isolation, like a sick room and a well room. Like, you see at the doctor's office, there's two different waiting areas and a pediatric office. And we're looking to be able to find a, a room where that student could be isolated until we can get a parent or caregiver to come pick them up. As far as the school nurse, she's gonna have the appropriate PPE on, the appropriate protective, personal protective equipment, so as the right mask, gloves, and those type of things. And she will make sure if she has to do something with that student, when it's time to go back to the well room, she's gonna take all that off, and she's gonna do proper, practice appropriate hand hygiene and those types of things before she goes back to the other students. But we are working to identify, like I said, an isolation-type room that we can have at each school, so that we can, has where to put the student until the parent can come get them. Did I answer your question?
Well, it, it's very complex, and if we don't have enough nurses, we really do have an issue.
Yes, ma'am. That is a, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the information and for the partnership.